I call the meeting to order. I'd invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We can have roll call, please.
Cam Conyer.
Here.
Craig Kershaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Here.
Wiley, sir.
Here. You all email a copy of our minutes from our November 6th meeting. If you have, uh, if you've had a chance to review those, I'd look for a motion to approve them or amend them.
Make motion accepted as emailed.
I'll second that.
Motion is second to accept the minutes from our November 6th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, first thing I have is this evening at the, uh, planned commission meeting, Josh Heck and Justin Wall. Justin Wall was the attorney representing Nick Koss. They came before the planned commission for rezoning of the Cottonwood Mobile Home Park. It's not the entire park, but, uh, it's about ninety percent of it. There's, uh, one small frontage area that's not being rezoned and not being sold. Uh, Josh Heck has a, a bid in on this property, or they have a contract for purchase on the property. And, uh, Josh Heck has Indiana Trailer Sales, which is located on Eleventh Street right behind the trailer court. And he would literally just kind of expand his business over there. Um, it was recommended by the, uh, planned commission for the rezoning. And if that is, uh, okay with the city council here, do I need to make that a matter of record?
Yeah, there's a, there's a written recommendation that is submitted. This needs to be made a matter of record. Shows that as of, uh, meeting earlier this evening, by a six oh vote, uh, the plan commission recommended that the rezoning be approved by council. So, uh, this needs to be made a matter of record. I've got an ordinance that would, uh, need to be introduced that would rezone the property. The request for rezoning was from RS residential suburban to C3 roadside business. And, uh, what I would recommend is that you introduce the ordinance adopted on two readings if you're so inclined to approve this, and then table it for third and final reading at the first meeting in December.
So no neighboring property had concern?
No.
When we say property, is that?
The entire?
The entire. It's, uh, it's a track.
The entire property?
If you look at Cottonwood Estates, Don, I don't know if you can bring that up on, on there or not, but...
Bring it up on the GIS rather than, that way you can actually see the parcels.
Yeah, the, uh, Cottonwood is comprised of three parcels. There's two smaller parcels up in kind of the northwest corner, and then there's one large parcel that's the rest of the, the-
Trailer.
-Mobile Home Park. Uh, it's the large tract that is being rezoned. Mr. Koss apparently is still going to retain ownership of the two smaller parcels. Uh, the property itself that is gonna be-
Keep it right there.
-zoned is ten some acres, I believe.
If you see up there where the, in the red, it says six eighty-two, six eighty- yeah, those are the houses on, on, uh, Elm Street. And then directly below that is the Mobile Home Park and its, I'm pretty sure-
Actually, I'm wrong.
The ones in the red or the one here?
The ones in the red are the ones that he is, is keeping. Correct. Thank you, Tyler.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones that have the bright red, six eighty-two, eighty-three, he is maintaining that that'll still belong to Nick Koss. Everything else in the Mobile Home Park is being sold.
So we're talking about from here all the way?
Back. All the way back. From where it says Mobile Home Park, below those red numbers, everything south of that-
So the only section that wouldn't change is that?
Those four little areas right there in the red.
Right. Where there's lot numbers.
We don't know what his intent is for making, keeping that. Uh, he did not ask to have it rezoned. Right now it's zoned for Mobile Home Park.
Right, but those are-
But that concerns me, though.
Well, those are actually planted lots. If you look above it, there are lot numbers. So those four lots appear to be part of a subdivision.
Which Mobile Home Park?
We got hands waving out here.
Uh, in the agreement, Nick asked to get rid of every trailer that-
Including those that are on what is not being purchased.
Yeah, that's part of the purchase agreement. All trailers must come out, must come out.
And I asked that, or we asked that question at the planned commission meeting. Does that mean all trailers on the park that's being rezoned? Or all trailers?
All trailers.
And, and-
Period.
And his attorney, speaking on behalf of him, said all trailers.
And, and Mr. Heck confirmed that as well.
So you need that to be made a matter of record first?
Yeah.
First, we'd have to do something-
We need to make a matter of record the recommendation of the planned commission.
I'll make a motion for the recommendation of the planned commission as a matter of record. I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then the second thing we would need to do is, would be to introduce this ordinance for the rezoning of Cottonwood and, uh, go through two readings and then table it. What would that number be, Phyllis?
Twenty eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two. Any questions before we do this? If not-
Make a motion then to place ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty-two on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two, short title, ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the Decatur Code of Ordinance of two thousand fifteen as amended for the purpose of rezoning real property.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty-two on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two on its first reading. Phyllis, would have roll call vote?
Cam Conyer.
Yes.
Craig Kershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley, sir. Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty-two on its second reading by short title only.
Second. A motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two, short title, ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the Decatur Code of Ordinance of two thousand fifteen as amended for the purpose of rezoning real property.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty-two on its second reading.
Second. A motion and a second to place, or for passage of ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two on a second reading. Phyllis, would have roll call vote?
Cam Conyer.
Yes.
Craig Kershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley, sir. Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty-two for its third reading on, uh, December four?
Fourth.
Fourth, twenty eighteen.
Second. Have a motion and a second to table ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two until December fourth for, uh, its third reading at that time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's that. Is this for Phyllis?
Yes.
And this? This is all for you. Um, Phyllis, did you bring the names of the people I'm reappointing, reappointing to redevelopment? Our redevelopment commission has, uh, some people's, yeah, some people's terms who are expiring and they've all agreed to be reappointed. I need to make these a matter of record. They are for Ron Story, Rex Henske, and Max Mellor. They've all agreed to serve again. Those three are my appointments. And didn't we decide that there are a couple others that are appointments from the council that are also willing to serve? And we would, uh, I would like to ask that council reappoint these two. That's Larry Ish and Craig Russett, John Craig Russett, actually. And, um, if you would so move to make mine, first of all, my appointment's a matter of record. I'd like to do that first. So moved? Second. Motion and a second to make my three appointments to the redevelopment commission matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then second, certificate of appointments in which are council's appointments, um, I would need a motion to approve this if it is so desired by you five. It's, uh, John Craig Russett and Lawrence J. Ish. Council members?
Council members.
This is your, this is your appointment, not mine.
It's a one-year term.
I'd like to make a motion.
One-year term.
All one-year term. Thank you. Who made the motion? Matt made a motion? Yep. Cam seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then you guys would all need to sign this if you wanna sign both of those and pass them down.
It's two S's and two T's, right? You're correct.
Uh, yeah, two S's, two T's.
Okay.
John Craig Russett. There's mine back. The next thing I have is really the last thing that I have, and that is that, uh, our first meeting next year in January, our regularly scheduled meeting would be the first Tuesday in January, and that's January first, which is a holiday. So when would council like to have that first meeting? Do you wanna move it back one day to Wednesday on the second? Which, were you, excuse me?
Can we push it a week? I don't care.
Then we'd have meetings two weeks in a row.
Oh, okay. I guess that's not between holidays.
Phyllis would have all kinds of bills.
That's after. That's not between-
The second would be, yeah, 'cause really, uh, Monday would be New Year's Eve. Tuesday would be New Year's Day. Wednesday, everybody goes back to work. We'd have a meeting that night. Want to just do it on Wednesday?
Wednesday's fine.
Recommendation to make it on Wednesday or a motion? Yeah, what do you need? Yep. A motion to make it Wednesday the third? Wednesday the second. Wednesday the second. Is that okay with you guys? Thank you. Take a motion and a second. Have our first meeting January two thousand nineteen on, uh, January second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Okay.
January second.
That's the agenda.
Oh, great. Yeah. A motion to, uh-
No, wait. Pay the claves.
Hold on, hold on.
Um, from my, from the mayor's seat here, I want, I want, I wish everyone a, a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving, and hope you don't all eat too much. Um, and I'll go around the room now for the department heads. Lenny.
I'm good.
Lenny's growing a beard and he's dying, dying it gray so he can look like me. Jeff and, and Jim?
No.
Jeff, you wanna report a little bit about the safety, is, what's it called? The fire, fire?
Survive Alive.
Survive Alive House. I had a granddaughter that was there today, and my daughter was there with her as one of the school moms.
My Lucy climbed out a window this week.
Yep, and my, my daughter told me, Dad, I think they should have that place open for adults. She said, I learned a lot today going there with my daughter, so.
So usually in the month of November, we do all of the public schools and parochial schools as a schedule. The first week is usually South Adams and Adams Central, and then the second two weeks are North Adams, and then most of the parochial schools are in North Adams. So those are, usually consumes almost all the way up to Thanksgiving. Today was our actual last day, but they canceled school one day for the ice storm, so we moved that class to Monday. What we do there is we teach an escape plan, exit drill home or EDA, and we show them how to make an exit plan from their home. We use the two-story house there at Safety Park. We make the plan to show how to get out of that house, and then we actually sign homework, and they have to go home and make an escape plan, and then we go back and look at it. One thing that we do is we ask them to practice, 'cause you could make every plan in the world, but until you actually do this, you don't know if it's gonna work. Um, usually there's roughly between five and seven hundred fourth graders we put through there in a month.
It's not just Adams County? Like you said, it's-
We did have a homeschool group this year that brought in some from Wells County. Ninety-five percent of them are Adams County kids, except for like Winnicott, and they have some that come from East Allen and that, so, but everything else is Adams County kids.
It's all fourth grade, right?
All fourth grade.
It's a great asset to the community, and, and I was told today that you did a fantastic job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He always does.
How many years overall? About twenty?
Uh, we started our first class in two thousand.
Two thousand.
So eighteen, yeah, eighteen years. It seems like an eternity. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jeff. Yep, thank you, Jeff. Kevin?
Dr. Dwyer.
Kurt?
Doc.
Don?
Jeremy?
Yeah.
I'm glad you seen that here early.
Uh, several of you guys had emails from the mayor last week, um, on the Community Crossings, um, application, and also the, um, invitation to, or attend the meeting in, uh, in Burn on Friday. Uh, wanna thank Councilman Kershaw and Wiley, uh, for attending that. Since the mayor and I could not attend, I was, we were both actually on a little mini vacation. The mayor's obviously longer than my mini, but, but anyway, um, make long story short, several months ago, myself and Toby Stephan from Butler, Fairland, Seiford, uh, came in and talked to you guys about exploring the Community Crossings grant, um, funding for street paving. And being that the size of our municipality, uh, we had a opportunity to seek a million dollars, and our match would have been twenty-five percent of, of that million that the city would have to put forth. Putting together, um, many, many streets, obviously we could've done many, many more, yeah, um, but we had applied for eighteen streets with a hope of getting at least half. Endot pulled through, and we ended up getting all eighteen streets. Uh, the total project amount for this is, uh, and these are all estimates. It could be a little more, it could be a little less. Uh, total's eight hundred seventy-five thousand, six fifty-one seventy-five, with, uh, Endot funds being six fifty-one, eight forty, thirty-two. City's portion will be roughly two twenty-three, eleven forty-three. Um, that will cover milling and resurfacing of eighteen local streets. The streets listed on, um, this list are the streets that will be repaved through this project. We have no, um, no way of getting away from these streets. That's what was applied for, and that's what we have to do on this. Uh, with this amount on top of what we normally pave, you're gonna add roughly ten to twelve additional streets out of our annual budget, so you're gonna be roughly one point two to one point three million dollars that you're gonna be putting back in asphalt in nineteen. So, um, really, really shocked and really, really appreciative of Endot for, Endot and Governor Holcomb for coming through for us on this.
One question. Um, is the majority of the infrastructure under these streets a pretty good shape, Jeremy?
We're gonna have to look at them a little closer, but majority of it.
Okay.
There, there's some cleaning, some valve exercising and stuff that we need to look at this winter. How this process will work is we have to have all the bid specs and stuff ready and have this bid out by April first. Um, and then it's a pretty tight construction timeframe, but I would say this paving and our, and our annual paving will probably go back to back. Um, it will be a rough few months in the city because you're looking at pavement on almost thirty streets.
It's gonna make a major improvement.
A major improvement.
Next thing I wanted to- Jeremy, for the record and for the media's sake, how were these streets selected and how, how's the criteria?
Several years back, through the Indiana Street Commissioners Association and Endot, uh, we, between the two groups, and actually I believe IAC was involved in it at some point, is we, as street commissioners, town managers, city managers, we all had to take courses to, uh, continue to receive Endot funding, uh, in our, basically our, our draws and stuff. And what that class did was taught us, uh, pavement ratings, baser ratings. You have to physically go around every year and rate your streets. Uh, we have a rating system that's been adopted by Endot. It's taught by, uh, LTAP, which is a local technical service, uh, group through Purdue. Uh, do a very nice job at continuing education, and, uh, it took a few years to get all the training and stuff in. It's, it's things that, you know, you just don't have time to go spend a week or two or whatever in these courses, so it, it took a few years to, to get all of it in. Um, I learned a lot. I think a lot of the street commissioners and, and other communities have learned a lot from it. But what that does is that prioritizes where your infrastructure money should go. Um, you know, you have a one through ten, your ten being your perfect streets, you know, streets you just paved all the way down to one, that would be a major reconstruction where, you know, you're tearing everything out and starting over, all the way down to the stone base. For the most part, um, and people could argue this all day long, you know, we average about six, seven, or eight. Um, you know, we're, we're midway. There's some streets around that really need a lot of infrastructure work that we've been kind of patching and crack sealing to try to get by until we can get water mains and sewers and stuff addressed, but, um, we're working that direction. The same, at the same time, I adopted the same asset management plan for our curb ramps, for the street light poles, for the city street signs, so it's not just the aspect of asphalt management, and, uh, I'm turning it more into a whole infrastructure management plan. Uh, it really, really works out nice. I can actually take my tablet and just walk down the street as long as I can get internet connection and, and, uh, just do all the inspections as we walk, so. It, it's really, really nice. I, we didn't really, I know we've been talking about this for several months. We need to spend a little time at a board of works meeting sometime, and-
Look at it.
I pulled up on the screen and kinda showed you what we're talking about, so you, you know, if you have ideas of, of areas that you wanna focus on, whether it be sidewalks or walking paths or whatever, it helps us to plan, 'cause I, I can pretty much tell you by the rating system how many more, how many more years you're gonna have before you need to really pave it or-
Couple questions if I could, then also like, where, the first one on here is Monroe Street. I assume you're talking like West Monroe Street since-
No, no, two twenty-four to Pickway Road, out, out by the school.
Okay, so it's east.
Out past the school.
Winchester Street from where to where?
That would be from Line Street all the way out to Walmart.
Okay.
Is there any plan to do any kind of sidewalk work out there or?
That's really up to you guys, so. We, we really need to-
I did that.
We need to talk about it.
I tried to take my kids on a bike down that road and out to that.
What, what I would recommend, several years back, um, when Roger was still here overseeing the sidewalk program, is we, we, we asked council, I know Cam was heavily involved in it, you know, in your districts, what you feel, or the areas that you feel needs, you know, sidewalks replaced, sidewalks extended, um, so we can keep addressing those as we go. Uh, you know, it's, I think at that time, it's like a three or a four-year list. You know, we just kinda worked down off there if we had money, uh, set aside for that. Also, at the same time, while we do the asset management plan, I'd like to show you the trail plan, 'cause the trail plan will probably take care of some of the areas that you're inquiring about sidewalks. Um, you know, there, there's been a little sidewalk projects that's been laying out there for, for, for years that we've just never addressed because of the funding and having the fund set aside for that.
Mm-huh.
I'd like to spend, you know, we get by the holidays, I think we really need to sit down and do some planning for the next couple of years.
Do you in need now of kind of an updated, like, the different districts and say, okay, here's what I see and-
I think that's what we need to-
Prioritize?
-really do at some point here. Uh, you know, we're getting into the project planning for nineteen, so any input that you guys have, you know, we-
We spent a big lot of that in the Adams seventh, getting all of this done up, first street, but now it's time to throw out. Right, the justice is thrown out to, I mean, Cannibal Park, and then it just stops, and then there's no sidewalk.
Yeah, there, there's some major infrastructure work that needs to happen there. That's why I skipped over that section and did a renovation, that way you get that water main and the sewers addressed.
And you pick it back up?
Pick it back up. Yeah.
One thing I would like to say, if you don't mind, um, thank you for taking the time. I know there was a lot of hours involved in this, uh, but it was the right way to do it.
Yep.
And thanks for your time and the effort of the people in your department to put this program together and get this grant. This is a big, big deal. We get, we're very fortunate, and I, and I wanted to just say, thank you.
Thank you. Um, there is other opportunities coming, um, or not due to timing. I know Cam expressed interest in trying to go again in January, do the timing. That's not gonna work 'cause they're changing the rules, um, for the January, but now it is until there's changes at the state level, or till the money runs out, there's gonna be two draws, or be a January draw and a June draw. Whatever money comes into that fund is gonna be expended out of that fund in the January awards and, and, and July awards, so, you know, as we continue, if you guys can still come up with a twenty-five percent match, we can keep knocking more and more of these, these residential streets out and, and even some of the, the major streets. Um, probably one of the hardest things budget-wise that we run into is the mile and two-mile stretches, because if I run into one of those, like, when we have to go west, that's about all we're getting done for a couple of year period. So, you know, some of those longer stretches, you know, we may wanna consider going after some of the this funds and even, you know, secondary out here when we get to that point.
The governor talked about changing to the two time periods, Friday.
Correct. And, and the biggest change starting in January is you have to have the project out for bid, and you have to have basically put a hold on it once you open a bid to a contractor, not give us, give them the notice to proceed and hand the bid to Endot. Because like on these numbers here, they're estimated, and they're estimated high.
Yep.
Because of, per se, on this first application, the total awarded on this application was five eighty-eight, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three dollars. If you come in at five hundred and ninety thousand-
You're gonna get five eighty-eight.
You're gonna pay it. But if you come in at five sixty-
You get five sixty.
You get five sixty, and that money doesn't go to somebody else. So they want dollar for dollar. Okay, here's my bid. Here's my application. The contractor's gonna have to hold that bid for that period of time to see if you're awarded. If you're not awarded that, then you either void the, the, the bid, or you go ahead and go on with it, pay it locally, so.
Is there a chance all the time that contractors would be reluctant to provide that bid?
No.
Okay.
They, they want to work, because if, if they don't do it, another contractor's gonna step in, and, and they will.
Does, do these, are these funds limited strictly to paving, or can you use it for curbs?
You can use it if it's tied to the project.
But you can't do it for the infrastructure that goes with the street, for sidewalk signs, things like that?
You cannot do standalone sidewalks if you can prove, like, your section on Winchester that you're talking about.
Right, 'cause you can't, um, man, I don't know about paving, but you can't even really pave Winchester Street, 'cause you don't have a sidewalk to pave again.
No. They will take that project, because that is in such a disarray and because of ADA concerns. So if we, like Cam and I had talked, if we go through and we do the infrastructure work, get the infrastructure work done, apply for that, apply for the sidewalks, all the ramps, they would take that project, or that would be acceptable. They just won't go through Matt's neighborhood and replace the sidewalks, 'cause we wanna to replace the sidewalks. They will not do standalone. Now, what we're going to have to do and that's not included in this project, is any handicap ramp that's not ADA compliant.
Have to be changed.
We will have to take care of it either in-house or through one of the local contractors. We kept that out of here because there's so much gray in trying to throw all those numbers in here and then NDOT doesn't even really want to see it because it replaces enough.
They want to pave.
What's that?
They want to see more paving.
They want to see more paving, any of these streets that have pavement markings on them, well, the pavement markings are included in this, so all the center line stripes, edge line will be taken care of. You're going to see a huge difference in 19.
Yeah. It took a lot of planning and I know you were really concerned about the grant and the work preparation for that, so thank you.
We had several seven, eight o'clock nights, make sure that we had everything right.
And then when the award came down, I think I might have emailed this to everybody on the council, but I guess it was three, four days before I went, no, it was a week before I went on vacation, a guy named Sam Freen, F-R-E-E-N, gives me a call. Hi Mayor, this is Sam Freen with the governor's office, Governor Holcomb's office, and I know you were awarded a Community Crossings Grant, and Governor Holcomb would like to come to Decatur and present you your award. I said, "That's great, that's awesome, you know, when's he going to come?" And he said, "Friday, whatever last Friday was the date." And I said, "Well," I said, "that's great, he can come then, however, I can't be here that day, I'm going to be on vacation." He goes, "Oh, well, I don't know if you'll, I don't know if he'll come." I said, "Surely, just because I'm not going to be here doesn't mean he can't come to Decatur." I mean, he's more than, I said, "We would love to have the governor come to Decatur." I said, "The last time we had the governor come to Decatur, we had to have a flood." I said, "So, would love to have the governor come." He says, "Well," this was before lunch, "let me, let me talk to the governor, I know he has his day all planned that day, and I will get back with you after lunch." So after lunch, he calls me, he says, "Mayor, I'm sorry, but we're not going to come to Decatur." I said, "Just because I'm not going to be there?" He says, "That's right." He goes, "Whatever community he goes to, he wants the mayor to be there." I said, "Well, I apologize." So, we came that close to having the governor come to Decatur, unfortunately, I was, I was really happy to see that when they did decide where to go, that it was just 12 miles down the road and it was still in Adams County and it was burned, I was happy for Mayor McKean. And I know he was real happy to be able to host it as well, so, yeah. And thanks Wiley and Craig for going down on behalf of the council, so.
You two look short next to the governor.
He's a tall dude.
That's what cowboy boots meant to have.
He always does.
It was nice that Matt Schultz was there to receive the check and Debbie representing her.
Yep, so thanks again, Jeremy, for all the work that you put on that.
Thank you.
Uh, Kelly? Don? Don, I already said Don. How about Bill Kerbuck?
I'm good, thanks.
Melissa?
I'm trying to bring up some material. The folks at Mind Eye Rappers are going to help us out with the Hannah Mountain project. What they've done is they've created some ladies clothing, some men's clothing, some kiddo clothing, all to have the Hannah Mountain load one. You can go online and order these, and $10 every purchase will go back to the Hannah Mountain project. So we're grateful for Mind Eye Rappers for helping us out, helping the project out with the Hannah Mountain project.
For 15 bucks, get a t-shirt, 10 bucks, go to the project.
They'll post this on the city Facebook tomorrow, their blankets, their hats, their sweatshirts, their polo shirts, t-shirts, and again, it's very easy to order, everything's even very reasonably priced, and again, $10 every item goes, will go back to the Hannah Mountain project.
Could you?
We're very appreciative of Mind Eye for bringing this project to the community and making a difference.
Greg Kitson has always been a very community-oriented business person, been very giving to the city, serving on the Plan Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, been a key member of Greater Decatur, and now he's doing this with his business, this is pretty cool. If you could, Melissa, do you know the website that maybe the media could read off or not?
I don't, I looked at the link off of Facebook and it's a long one, so I can.
I might have it on that email that you sent.
Yeah.
I can, I can look it up real quick here.
I think it's a super-long address.
Is it, is it a super-long address? Well, then.
I can email it out.
Yeah, we'll email it to the media, how'd that be? All right. What else you got, Melissa? Anything else? Anything else from the public? Looks like we only have one public here. You're good? Council members, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up something from, I think it was 2012, I took a little vacation down to Holiday World, stayed at Jasper, Indiana, so at the same time when the sculpture tour was kicking off. Jasper has a pretty amazing art program, public art program. And that, when I got back, I called down there and tried to figure out what they do, how they manage all the different programs. I said, "Well," and they're pretty proud of it, "we're the first community to have a public arts commission." "Oh, well, tell me more." And so I learned a lot about what an arts commission was, how it was funded for them, but recently, with conversations that we've had with, with BIGs and preparation for the Second Street Loss, and just some other things, all the different things going on in our community with art, I think it's time that we also look at an arts commission. And there's multiple reasons for this. One, it shows a permanent commitment to the arts, but two, it's really an opportunity, I would say, to kind of corral all the different initiatives. Yeah, I don't know how you all feel, but I don't know that when it comes to giving money towards certain projects, I don't think that we need to be in a position of determining what art we're going to support or what we're not going to, or determining what is art. But in conversations with, you know, specifically the Second Street Loss project, about how we market that effectively, it's those things that I didn't really think about. It goes back to, you think about amenities, but what is going to be attracted to an artist is a community that has a public arts program, right, a public arts commission, opportunities to participate and display their pieces in public settings. And so I think that has highlighted even the importance of it, but ongoing programming, the maintenance of the first floor for that space and the programs that go in there, and who's going to manage all this type of thing, that's something we don't really have a hold on. There's a lot of different organizations out there, but collectively, who's going to corral them all? And if we're going to be required or being asked to sponsor these things, continuing to put money towards art, I think the idea of being able to budget it would help us out a lot. So, now, there was recently state legislation that was passed, am I correct on this, mostly because you went to a course on this?
And it's more of a local rule, I guess at Hubbard you want to do it. There's many, lots of communities across the state of Indiana and across the country that are called a 1% ordinance, and they, whether it's a funded, whether it's total, the city's total annual budget, what a lot of larger communities do is they either tack on the 1% of whatever the total, if there's a major construction project that comes in their community, they tack on 1% to the developer and say, that 1% is going to go back to the art. There's lots of ways that you can structure it, but more and more communities are supporting the art, you hear what's called this 1% ordinance.
But Fort Wayne just established one last year, Indianapolis recently established one, but.
If you're going to be an arts community, then.
Yeah, I mean, there's multiple things that could, they could be doing, but like for the programming, the tenant selection for the Second Street Loss, like, those are all things that, as we talk with the representatives from BIGs, like, that needs to be brought together. Who are these core people, who is the committee going to be that does the tenant selection? But when it comes to public art in the downtown, recently, and I need to look at more of this myself, but I believe our sign ordinance has some stipulations, and I'm looking at Kurt because there's, it talks about murals, and that a mural needs to come through the city for approval. And right now, it's to your department, and I don't think you necessarily want to be in that position of determining what is art and what is not.
Well, I don't think we had that discussion, it wasn't just going to come to my department, it was going to come to theirs.
Well, again, right, but again, is that really our role and responsibility? So the idea of having an arts commission that can be made up of representatives from the different, the various groups, but like any other commission that we have, representatives from the city as well, the city dollars are going to be too near. But the idea of a budget, I think we can come up with, and maybe it's a combination of, you know, a fixed amount plus a percentage of seed. So there's some variable things. I think we could put restrictions on this, is that it has to be, you know, it can't all be used for one group or one project, it's got to be split or spread out through the year. There are, I think there's new grant opportunities, and maybe a portion of it says, oh, this is a reserve for dollar for dollar, meaning that the commission has to go out and raise that money. So I have, go back to the whole conversation with Jasper about how they did it, well, yeah, they have a core amount that the, that the city does put towards this, but that's not the majority of their budget, it's up to them, and they ended up hiring somebody full-time, right, for that commission, not the city's employee, it's the commission, that went out after all these grants, and so they, I want to say that their budget was several hundred thousand dollars. So that's Jasper, it's different. But having an entity in place that we can go to, that is going to be helping making these decisions on behalf of the arts in our community, and it's not the responsibility of city government to do that, I think is an important thing, I think we're at the point where we need that, we're coming up with, you know, all these questions about the programming and what's going to be happening in that first, in the loss space on the first floor. So, just something I think we need to look at, I'm happy to kind of put some more meat on the bones and maybe bring it back for discussion.
Yeah, I think that would be good, I think that, you know, when you say a public arts commission, you know, I think most of us in here would probably say, okay, what is a public arts commission, you know, define it, what is it, you know? Communities that have an arts commission, how do they, how are they set up, are they running, how do you establish a board, what are the, you know, bylaws?
Right, exactly, all that stuff needs to be part of it. I mean, it won't be unlike a redevelopment commission when that was established, it'd be very similar, an idea that you're going to have representatives from different organizations, that there's money that goes on a regular basis. Originally, redevelopment commission was seeded by money from the city.
Yeah, if you, if you would get more information, come back to us with that, I think that'd be awesome.
But just recent events and how all this development is happening right now with this project.
I hear you. Get ahead of it.
There's more and more tasks in projects that are happening between art and the city that keep coming to our desk that need to be handled, and we believe that a public arts commission is the right entity to take care of those tasks.
And, you know, some of these things have come up in the past where, okay, the sculpture, the people's choice award are from the sculpture tour, the city wants to, who's purchasing it, right? Who owns that piece of art? Who's insuring it? Well, we are, right? But who actually owns this stuff? Who's buying it, right? Who's raising that money to buy that piece of art if it's, if it's something that Sculpture Tour wants to do? There's a lot of these different things that have come up continually, so, yeah.
We continue to get calls from private individuals who want to purchase and donate a piece of art to the city. Do we want that art? Is it in good case? Where is it located? Where does it live? Who ensures it? Those kind of things. And those kinds of, the things that are tapped into the art.
In part, we're now, we, we put that whole sculpture program, the guy, and I'm failing to remember the guy's name, but he was from, Steve Booty, there you go.
Did you forget that name?
I don't know.
He's still over at Riverside, didn't he?
Yeah, because he, that's his whole thing, is help put together public art initiatives and plans, right? And they even talked, you know, we go back, we had talked about our interests to our community.
I remember.
So, those are things that have, that have not been included, our focus has been on the downtown, so a public, an arts commission would be the gatekeeper, so to speak, of art in our community, public art in our community, so.
I concur.
I think, I guess my only opinion is, I think it's a great idea, but I think it should move quickly because we have to pull all these art together, they're all kind of separated now, and that loss space is going to be ready to go here quickly and we're going to have an area below that we have no idea, I mean, we have an idea what to do with, but who's going to control that?
Be careful how you say "we have no idea" because there are people that are working on that.
But somehow, it has to be funded and controlled and.
It's got to be managed.
Managed. And I don't think us, the city council up here.
And I don't, and she doesn't have the capacity to do it all.
Need to be involved in managing, but we're getting it, our facilities are getting bigger, somehow somebody's going to have to manage them, otherwise it's going to all come, hit us all the same time.
That's the reason we need a arts commission.
So when you say, you were like.
I say sooner than later.
Report back in December?
Yeah.
I'll do my best.
You don't have anything else going on, do you?
But this is important, and that's why I brought it up, so I'll gladly dive in a bit.
Thank you, Ken. Any other comments from council? Phyllis, do you have anything this evening?
Yeah, we already got our 18, or 1782 notice from DLGF on the budgets for 2019. Our sets valuation went up over 12 million, so that put our tax rate about the same as this year, so it's a $1.13 for a hundred sets valuation.
What was it this year?
A $1.13.
Same.
And when we, when we did the budget, we were assuming.
It was like 30 cents more.
Yeah.
After we got the sets valuation of our, that.
So it's good.
So that's, that's all positives.
Good deal.
I understand you guys don't want to change anything in the budget, I mean, I think you would, but.
What's that?
You guys don't want to change anything in the budget, we have 10 days to change anything if you want to change anything.
How about, how about, how about money for public art?
Ken, do you have anything?
Uh, no.
Gets here early, they have nothing?
I'm trying, I'm trying to get everybody out of here.
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Second.
I've got many things, I got.
Motion in a second, pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion in two seconds to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.